Tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking.
Mayor Steele, council members.
Jay Vaverechek. I may potentially reserve opportunity to address the council following the finance review itself, so, thank you.
Following, you want to speak after the review?
It's your prerogative, whichever you feel is most appropriate, so.
I prefer if you go ahead, so.
Okay.
The first item on our agenda is presentations and proclamations. We have Good Samaritan Recognition for Heroic Acts Awards, and we have lifesaver recognitions that we will now take up. Tonight, I want to recognize and thank three incredible individuals whose acts of bravery embody the very best of our community. On February 27, nine-year-old Price King and his friend Amelia Shriner spotted a building on fire. Instead of freezing in fear, Price immediately asked Amelia to call 911. Thanks to their quick thinking, they were the first to report the fire, and because of their actions, no one was hurt. Our firefighters rescued pets from the home, ensuring all lives, human and animal, were safe. Then, on March 5, resident Lito Canonis saw Grand Island Police Sergeant Mike Nelson struggling with a combative suspect near the intersection of Fourth and Broadwell. Lito didn't hesitate, he asked if he could assist. With his help, Sergeant Nelson was able to safely take the suspect into custody without anyone getting hurt. Price, Amelia, and Lito reminds us what it means to be a good neighbor, to act with courage and compassion when it matters most. On behalf of the City of Grand Island, thank you. You make us all proud to call Grand Island home, and these three individuals will receive the Good Samaritan Certificate and a pin from the City of Grand Island. Also, I am honored tonight to recognize two heroes among us, Councilmember Doug Brown and Wes Harris. During the week of March 3, Doug and Wes were at Central Nebraska Regional Airport when a man suffered a medical episode on the jet bridge. Without hesitation, they jumped into action, performing CPR until the man was revived. Their quick thinking and courageous efforts saved a life that day. It's often said that heroes are simply ordinary people who step up in extraordinary moments, and that's exactly what Doug and Wes did. On behalf of our entire community, thank you both for your bravery and selflessness. Grand Island is better because of people like you. And we have a lot of people here who wanted to see all of our certificate recipients recognized tonight. Price King, our fourth grader from Stolly Park School, has his mother, Katie, and friend Jake here, and his father, Adam Portillo, and his brother, Alex Portillo, and his grandparents, Panchita and Alfredo Portillo. They turned out in force to acknowledge Price's extraordinary citizenship. And for Amanda, Amelia Shriner, we have her mother, Brittany, and friend Mike, and Amelia is a second grader at Stolly Park School. Lito Canonis is here with his wife, Veery, and I just spoke to Doug Brown, Councilmember Doug Brown, before this meeting started, and he mentioned that Lito has had 13 deployments to the Middle East. That's remarkable, and thank you for your service.[315.14][315.14][applause] And of course, all of us here are very familiar with Councilmember Doug Brown and with Wes Harris and their lifesaving efforts at the airport, and we have a large contingent of airport people here tonight to watch these men receive their certificates. We have Nicole Chapluskis, Kevin and Lisa Harris, the parents of Wes Harris, Lindsay Harris, Wes's wife, Debbie Hand, and also I see Mike Olson, the director of the airport, is with us also tonight. So these people understand what remarkable individuals we are honoring tonight, and with that, Mrs. Grineer and I will go down to the main podium and invite you together, all of you certificate receivers, together around so that we can give you a certificate and a pin from the City of Grand Island.[393.75][393.75][applause] We will start with our two youngest award recipients. Price King. Price, this is awarded to you for your heroic acts. Price, I want to get a photograph with you, please.[440.62][440.62][laughter] Thank you, Price. And Amelia Shriner, I have an award for you, too.[462.15][462.15][applause] This is also for your heroic acts, and I want you to hold this up. Like, and you know what? I want to bring Price back up. I noticed, just in a second, I noticed he wasn't holding it up so we could see the certificate. And Amelia, right over here, and get your pin, please. Price, let's try yours again. So we hold that up so everybody can see it, okay? And now, the next Good Samaritan recognition goes to Lito Canonis for his heroic acts.[516.01][516.01][applause] Another round of applause for our Good Samaritan winners.[538.29][538.29][applause] And now for our lifesaver recognition certificates, the first awarded to Councilmember Doug Brown.[552.41][552.41][applause] And our lifesaver recognition awarded to Wes Harris.[574.66][574.66][applause] No one can speak better about what it means to have citizens who step up in emergency situations than Fire Chief Corey Schmidt. Chief Schmidt, would you please come forward?
I just want to thank Price and Amelia. There's an old saying, I don't know how true it is, it came from Smokey the Bear. It said, "Fires double in size every one minute." And again, I don't think that's true, but I can tell you from experience, the earlier we get called, the earlier we can get there as a fire department, the bigger difference we can make. Without you guys calling 911, there could have been a much different outcome. And I think I heard on the news, one of the residents in the triplex didn't know the house was on fire. So that could easily turn very deadly, and I greatly appreciate your fast actions. And again, no matter how good of a fire department we have, it takes someone to call 911 so we can get there as soon as possible to make the biggest difference, and you both did that for us. So I greatly, greatly appreciate your efforts and your bravery in that situation. At your age, I probably wouldn't have been able to do that, so, congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, award winners. Thank all of you who came to support them. It's remarkable to have people like you in our city, and it's wonderful to acknowledge your wonderful acts. Councilmembers, we will now take up our finance revenue review, and I'm going to ask Jamie Parr to speak, and then Mayor Vaverechek.
Thank you, Mayor Steele and council. Thank you for all that you do for our community. I just wanted to speak for a moment. I noticed that the state fair was on the, in the packet for conversation this evening. Want to just make a statement that the funds that the host city matches to bring the state fair to the community are by constitution, and it's not new funds, it is something that has been happening since the fair has been in town since 2010. So wanted to make that statement, and if you have any questions after the proposals, I'd be glad to try to address those for you, including any information about how much the fair has put back into the Foner Park campus over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vaverechek?
Thank you, Mayor Steele and council. That was brief, Jamie, so I'll, I don't know if I can exceed that limit or not, but I'm going to do my best. First off, thank you. Thank you for the counsel, Mayor Steele, and city administration and city attorney for actions resulting on the Foner Park ground lease. I would have been here at 6 o'clock, but I thought the meeting was at 7, so I wasn't here, so that's my bad. But thank you. I know it's, was an important consideration, I think it provides a better outlook for the future, so, thank you very much for that. And Jamie's remark about state fair lottery match, I mean, what a deal. And we think back going 15 years ago when we leveraged all our assets in our community to go ahead and lure the state fair to come to Grand Island, and what indeed an investment that is that we're making and the taxpayers are making, and every community in rural Nebraska would give everything to have a state fair in their community, so I think it well serves the public need and the opportunities of Grand Island. I know later on this evening, you're also going to go ahead and have a presentation regarding lodging taxes, and also I had made a phone call Saturday morning to Laura, she was kind enough to call me back, and I've got clarification on that matter, so no need for a study session or an agenda topic. I've been advised that indeed you clarified and modified the ordinance and made a resolution for Vanuark, so thank you, Laura, for that leadership as well. As far as lodging taxes, I know it's going to be up for discussion, and now is probably not the time to address thoughts and sentiments on that, but I think it's an important ingredient to determine what our community or what you want to accomplish with that going forward. So I think there's a lot of ways they could go ahead and have maybe more uses than what it has historically been set aside, while still respecting the operational success of a new vendor, any vendor for that matter, at the Heartland Events Center. So going forward on the lodging tax, I think there's going to be a study session, I think Laura remarked about maybe a month or so, if I'm not mistaken, and hopefully we'll keep an open mind for the best use of that, because in Hall County, for example, that's an industry that's worth $35 million. $35 million is sales attributed to lodging taxes. Buffalo County is about $45 million. Lancaster County, Lincoln's about three times that, about $118 million, and it's been largely flat maybe the last few years, but I'd like to think that we could go ahead and do more and leverage the many things that the city council has provided in Parks and Recreation, the upcoming Good Life District, all the improvements that's going on now with the casino. I think that figure can go ahead and even rival potentially a million dollars a year if you wanted to also consider a modernizing rate of a lodging tax. It's similar, maybe some other enterprising communities that indeed set that lodging tax for what they want to accomplish. So I'm going to close with, once again, thank you for the opportunity to address you. Local government's probably the one shining place where indeed any citizen can come forward and address concerns to a policymaking body. I applaud anyone that wants to have that opportunity, and I appreciate to do so tonight. Thank you, Mayor Steele.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, are you leading off?
So, good evening, and welcome to Revenue Review 101. So, so please ask questions as I go along, either turn your lights on or just say, "Hey, I got a question." So I'd like to turn this into more of a conversation than anything. So we're going to start off with Mitch's favorite spreadsheet. So I just wanted to show you sales tax revenue for this year. And so I just got the data today for March, which is January sales, and that was 15.5% up from last year, same period. So for the year, we're up 1.5%. Prior to this, we were actually negative. Now, if you look at the spreadsheet here, you see October, which is August sales, and December, which is October sales. I don't know what happened there. So the only thing I can think of is if you look across line 74, the October-August sales, you see last year was an anomaly. Usually it's around 1.3, 1.4, and so we had 1.7, so I'm not sure if there was, maybe somebody came online, or there was back tax paid, whatever. We just don't get that data from the state. December, down, you know, 16.8. Again, I'm not sure what happened there, so that's what really is kind of just put me into a very cautious area, especially coming into budget. So again, I think October's an anomaly, and I think December, I'm not sure on that, but with the last three months reporting, obviously we're doing pretty well. So if we keep at 1.5%, I think we'll be really good for the year. That's basically what I forecasted last year's budget. It was, I think, a 1.5% to 2% increase over last year. So tonight, I am getting into the general fund taxes, or revenues, I should say, and, you know, we always talk about property tax and sales tax quite often because those are our major revenue sources. Property tax is very certain, so we know what we're getting. So property taxes here, we're, budget is $12 million. We have asked for that year in, year out, for six years. So later on, I will show you a slide, or actually one of our dashboards, that really shows a good picture of what our property taxes have done. So this is all general fund, and we have the motor vehicle tax, which you pay when you go get your tags. We have the city dividend fee. You'll notice that is on all the utility bills. You will see that on there, and so that comes to the city. We're projecting $3.6 million on electric and then $145 on water. Franchise fees, in '23, we actually had a very good year, I'm not sure what happened there, but they're usually staying around $500,000, and that is for the right-of-way for using city property for all the lines. The PCS 911, that is on everyone's cellphone, they pay that fee, and it comes to the city, and we use it for 911 services. Telephone franchise, that's about the same as a natural gas franchise, same as cable TV. And then we have casino tax, and I'll get into that later. I just want to go down to here, a couple of, one that's real important is this one right here, that is actually being discussed at the legislature right now. This is the municipal equalization fund, and so this is helping, this is, so when the state collects our sales tax, they take a 3% admin fee. Well, you would think the admin fee is to pay for people who collect the tax. It does not, it goes to a certain fund, which comes back to cities through a very complicated formula, and it's based off a property tax. So you can see, and here's the part I don't like about it, is you get penalized, better you do. So if you, you know, up your property tax and everything else, you'll get more municipal aid. It doesn't make sense. It truly does not. But, so this year, we know what we get, it's $1.6 million. Next year, it's going down, and I think it's like 1.6, so it's dropping a little bit. The admin charge on line 18, 1920, just want to kind of explain these. So an admin charge, and it's to the enterprise funds, and that is, it's a formula that is paying finance, city clerk, public information, administration, legal, and everything else that we do for those enterprise funds. And so it's a calculation of how many hours are we working on their items? So the study goes back to 2009, it, we probably should revisit it, but that's the formula we use, and that's, and that is what that is. Everything is pretty self-evident. Interest and dividend revenue obviously is doing very well for us. So what's, what I really want to show folks, and this is our.
Mr. Nickerson has a question.
Yes, Mitch.
Said the municipal equalization tax was under discussion. What, what is the discussion about that?
Eliminate it.
Totally eliminate it? Okay.
Is that correct, Laura?
Eliminate it for first-class cities, or no first-class city would, bill would be able to receive municipal equalization fund.
That could be a $1.6 million hit to us.
Could be, so, yeah.
What's the momentum of the discussion? Are you, can you tell the temperature of the group on that?
It.
First-class cities are for it, and, I mean, are against it, and everybody else?
I believe it was the former mayor of Kearney brought it up to eliminate it.
Senator Klaus introduced the bill. The League of Nebraska municipalities has indicated it intends to either object to or be neutral on it, but will certainly testify on it when it comes up. Grand Island submitted, Pat put together an excellent fiscal note that we submitted to the legislature showing the negative impact it would have on the city's finances. Our conversations with the league have been that if there are problems with the formula, Kearney, under the formula, receives zero. So if there are problems with the formula, we would certainly be open to reworking it because, as Pat mentioned, it really makes no sense. The more fiscally conservative you are, the less equalization assistance you get. But it is, it's a fund that we pay into, and we collect a substantial amount of sales tax, and 3% of our sales tax goes into this fund. If the funds are not distributed to cities using that equalization formula, it goes to the state's general fund, the balance does. So if your cities were to be eligible to receive it, the fee would still stay at 3%, and that would just simply increase the amount going into the state's general fund.
Many first-class cities are there? There dozens, or just a few?
That I don't know.
First-class, I forget what the population is.
Seven or 10,000?
Yeah, but then there's, then there's metropolitan. I want to say the number is about 18.
There's a lot of, there are a lot of first-class cities.
Yes.
Okay. Well, the other discussion would be, and we've been in this position as a council, but if they wanted to go that route, it would be better to phase it out over a period of years rather than just gone in a year, so.
Correct.
I mean, we can, we can plan that way, so if we have to compromise, I would sure rather see that than just total gone next year, so anyway. Okay, curious.
Parr?
Laura, what is this reasoning for giving that? To me, if you have an incentive to do better than you're going to do better, you know, going to be more efficient and have a better-run community and Pat's work with the finance company, is this a personal vendetta against Grand Island, or?
I, I wouldn't say that, and I have not personally spoken with Senator Klaus about his rationale. I do know that in speaking with the city manager for Kearney, part of their concerns with the way the formula works is because of the way, their concern is with the formula, her concern is with the formula. As I understand it, she wasn't aware that the bill was going to be introduced, so it could just be that it was introduced as a mechanism to get people talking about ways to change the formula.
I, I myself read the article in the World Herald, and everybody was kind of put back and surprised that it was even introduced.
Yes.
Okay, so moving along here, so we're going to, we're going to go to the transparency portal that the city has, and so just, I just want you and everyone at home watching the millions, that you go to our website and come down to Transparency Center, and it loads up, and so here are our dashboards. So the first one I want to show you is the property tax that we just talked about, and it really, I think visually shows where the city is at on this. So here's our revenue for, you know, since 2018. And then here's our mill levy history. As you can see, it's going down just about every year, so it's a nice picture there. And this is the distribution. So you click here, and this would show you, here's Hall County, the blue portion of the dollar bill, that's how much of that dollar bill goes to Hall County. City of Grand Island is in the gold here, this is how much goes to the county. Here's the school, that is the major portion of our property tax, that goes there. Some of the other items, you have Hall County Ag Society, very tiny piece of that, the NRD, small amount, Central Community, so then you have the Airport Authority, and then CRA. So the point there being, public schools is the highest, and then it's county. So, the point there being, public schools is the highest, and then it's county, and then the city. And here's another, this just shows a distribution of, if your house is valued at 240, 258, that would be my house. This is the taxes that I paid. And so, another visual on that. So, I really like the property tax. It is, it is really visually shows how Grand Island is doing. Sales tax revenue, this is the, and a lot of these dashboards, I want, if you need information, I have loaded some information about each of these taxes into these dashboards. So, if you're wondering, you know, how much it is, or when it is enacted, or where it goes, or how it's used, I try to put that into the first part of the dashboard. The links in here, like ordinance 8910, you can click on it, and it'll pull up. So, this is our total sales tax revenue. We're budgeting 29.1, and we're at 12,492. This is five months in. These, these are all at the end of February 28th to 2025. So, sales tax revenue there. Casino tax. So, again, here's the breakdown of, of the casino tax. 20% of the gross gaming revenue is then divided. It's 2.5% of the 20 goes to the state general fund. 2.5% of the 20 goes to compulsive gamblers assistance fund. 70% of the 20% goes to property tax credit cash fund at the state. City of Grand Island receives 12.5 of the 20, and Hall County receives 12.5 of the 20. Currently, the city share of the casino tax is deposited in the general fund, and it is for property tax relief. I will tell you, without this incremental income, we, we would, might be relying on some property tax. So, it's, it's been, it's been good for us. So, in the budget of this year, we are anticipating the casino resort opening, and so, that is why the 1.2 million budget for this year. So, we're sitting at 281,909. Every report looks just about right on par with what we received last year, so. Yes?
We've answered, you've answered this before, but remind me, that casino tax, is that on the gambling, the gaming, or is that anything at the casino?
Great question. So, that's at the casino.
So, the hotels, everything, the food, everything at the casino?
Well, just, just the gambling part of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so then, so then there's a gambling tax coming. So, that's different. That is, the machines you'll see in like Casey's, or some of the other bars, whatever you, you know, that is like gambling, but they call that gambling tax. So, it's, we have no idea what that revenue will be, but we should receive some of that. So, next I want to touch on, let's go to a couple of these revenues here. These are, so motor vehicle sales tax revenue. That is the sales tax you pay on when you buy a car, or the sales tax you pay if you're leasing it. So, 2.7 million is what we budgeted. A little conservative, agree, you know, it was 3 million last year, but you just, you never know. So, that's what that is. So, the motor vehicle fees, it's based, it's based on value, weight, and use of the vehicle. And so, when you go get your tags, this fee here actually is paid, it comes to the general So, that's the motor vehicle fee, and now we have a motor vehicle tax. So, it's very confusing. So, this is based off, this is like the property tax of the vehicle. And all of this revenue goes to the streets fund for their operation and for the streets in Grand Island. Again, along, you know, if you want to read the definition and how, how it's all derived, here is our municipal equalization fund revenue, and it's got a link to the statute. So, there are those. I want to move on to the streets funds. I know during budget, we really don't talk about their revenue too much. And so, we get into here, and they have quite a few different revenues that come in. So, the, you know, they have the gas tax that comes in, they have the motor vehicle fee, they have the stormwater surcharge, you know, that's on your utility bill when that, when you pay that. That money actually goes to utility billing, then over to the streets department for storm water, for stormwater maintenance. We have motor vehicle sales tax, 2.9. Paving permits, very little. Statewide plan research, 8,000. Road use funds, this is from the state, 7.3 last year, and we're at 3 million this year. And so, the transfers, the 7.4 million, this is funds from our sales tax fund. It is, what goes in there is, and I'll go back to this, is the 2004 and 2018 sales tax. I'm going to go back there real quick. So, 2004, the citizens, Grand Island voted for a half-cent sales tax to be used for, one half of that half is used for property tax relief, which goes into the general fund. The other half can be used for capital improvements, including but not limited to fire department facilities, police department, library, parks and rec facilities, grand generation, and infrastructure. And so, there is no sunset on the sales tax. 2018, another half-cent sales tax was voted in. That is, is, it can be used for mainly, we use it mainly for roads, and we've been using it for public safety equipment. So, it's helped buying police cars, fire trucks, ambulances, you name it, anything public safety. We're using some of this 2018 funds. Now, since then, we've been using, trying to stay around the 20% mark of that tax to go to public safety, and then all the rest of it goes to roads. And so, this sales tax does have a sunset. It's March of '29, and I know that's a ways away, but it is, this, it is so important for us prior to this sales tax. This money was coming out of the general fund. And now we're not, we're able to operate the general fund and do the things that we do well. This tax has, has greatly helped us in improving the roads in Grand Island and those projects. The Potash project was a 15, well, at least $15 million project, which is being paid out of here. Mitch?
With this particular tax, I know that there was, was the wish list that was created of all the things that we were hoping that we could accomplish in this 10-year period. How far out are we looking on that wish list as we're getting down to the last four years now? Trying to figure out what we want to do and how to plan that, because I know what, you got to plan this stuff in advance. You got to know what you want to plan for. How are we doing on that with four years left?
Keith, can you help me out here?
Obviously, we're making good progress. There's always stuff well beyond that, that list. We started working on the priorities and just started knocking them off, as well as what our normal contributions would be from all the other revenues that Pat was talking about. So, I mean, we're making good progress. I don't know for sure how far down that list, or what was on the original projections of how far we should get, but again, like Pat mentioned, a lot of the, the road improvement projects out west, obviously, the South Locust project that we're working on now, we have other big ones in the hopper that are, just take so much longer that we probably won't get done by this time, such as like Broadwell Overpass. Because of all the, the funding involved in that, that'll be a, a long process that, should the voters vote to carry this on, that would be an example of a project that would slip probably into that next 10-year period, just because we can't get it to that point by the time this is done.
So, part of our six-year plan is, is incorporating some of these dollars, we're hoping, probably in the worksheet, that you were anticipating that? Okay. I'm just kind of curious, because four years isn't that long, as we know, especially on these big road projects and the expense that goes with those. We want to make sure that, and I'm sure you are, just wondering how we're looking at that four-year period. And it sounds like we've got projects there, again, you just, we're not going to be down to the Nats Fanny on any of it, but we're going to be, have an idea of what a good chunk of that money will be going and what projects.
Yeah, again, all, these, these projects take so long to get going. It's not just a stop-on-a-dime type of thing. So, obviously, that, that budget year, when the sales tax could potentially come off the books, you know, that, that might be a little tricky on how we, how we look at budgeting that year with only half, half a year really guaranteed of this proceed. So, you know, we'll have to work through that when we get there. But, overall, I mean, I don't know how much faster we could have done some of these things. The progress that we've made in the last six years has been, I, I would say, pretty, pretty impressive, and it, like Pat said, it wouldn't have happened without this.
And I like all my colleagues and all of us involved here, we appreciate the support of Grand Island residents that support these types of initiatives, because this was a 10-year chunk here, and we said, you know, we need the help, and they said, we'll do it, and I appreciate that.
And quite honestly, like a lot of the things, we, I'll, I'll use the, the old Potash for an example. When we originally were looking at that project, I believe it kind of got spurred when, when the post office said, we're moving out west. You know, that kind of drove, hey, we need to do something out there. I think it was log overdue at that time. But, between that and the North Road project, just using our normal budgeting process, we had those projects break in, broken up into years and years. I mean, if it wasn't again for this to kind of speed that along, we'd probably still be working on those projects. So, I mean, it's, it's hard to gauge, you know, progress-wise, because I think we're just, we're, we're going down the list faster than we would have without it, if that makes sense.
Yep, it does, okay. And then Pat, again, looking at the capital things for first responders, that's probably a little easier to know that in the next four years, what we're going to need, or at least what we're anticipating, and you're saying 20% of that we're trying to put aside for those type of projects.
Yes, yeah. Believe it or not, they get to spend it every year, so there's no planning ahead. But, yeah, we know what's coming up to purchase, and it's, it's well-timed. So, you know, the, like, cost of a ladder truck's $2 million. Wow, it's crazy, but, you know, we need it.
Exactly. Okay, very good. Just, four years will be here before we know it.
Oh, I know. Jack?
Thank you. So, when I look at that list, I remember when that campaign happened. I helped in a small way with the campaign back when I was at the school district. And I remember the excitement around being able to have that money to do some things. And I look at this list, and I see library facilities, parks and recreation facilities, senior citizen and grand generation center facilities and infrastructure. How much of those types of things have we put this money to?
So, prior to when I got here, so the 2004 tax, I believe, was the law enforcement center, I think, part of that. It was to increase the size of the library, their addition. I'm not sure about park and rec or fire, but those are some of the things that it, that it went to. We're still using 2004 sales tax for grand generation. There, you'll see, there's a transfer of 65,000 a year, and we're just, you know, things break down in the building, we are replacing, you know, as needed.
I just don't know how much that gets talked about. You know, and the campaign I was talking about was the '18, but that stuff from the 2004, that's stretching, that's making a long-term impact.
Absolutely. And so, it is my plan, especially for the 2018 sales tax, to come up with a list of, here all, here's all the things that sales tax is paid for as in the different projects.
With that 2018 one, when that sun sets again in four years, that's not very far away, he says, down the road.
It's not, and it, honestly, honestly, it's a little scary, you know, because it's been put to great use. And so, it would be a whole different budgeting cycle.
Okay, thank you.
So, that was streets funds, mainly it's gas tax and sales tax. Down here is just the expenditures, as you can see. Capital outlay, just from the streets is 8.4 million, and operating's very low, and then personnel. So, Shannon does a great job there, Keith does a great job there. So, you know, they, they, they can burn through some money, but obviously, you know, if you drive on some of our roads, they, they kind of need the help. So, at this point, I am turning it over to Brian Schultz, and he's going to go over food and beverage, hotel occupation tax, and Keno funds, and then I'll come back and wrap up our discussion.
I guess my PowerPoint got the crowd here, not Pat. So, um, and I just want to emphasize, I, I give a presentation about once or twice a year around the community groups. The biggest takeaway, I would tell you guys, is that the levy graph that Pat showed earlier, that's not viable without the 2018 sales tax. They, they go hand-in-hand. Without each other, that property tax levy doesn't get to go down, and our tax ass does not get to stay flat like it has been. So, anyway, a lot of, this is, this is in the packet, but I'm going to go over a little bit of this stuff. So, Pat kind of went over some of the different revenue streams that we have around the community. He was primarily going over a lot of the general fund ones. This is kind of combination of general fund, and some of these are also special revenue funds for us. For those of you that are new, the special revenue funds, they have their own unique fund structure, they stand alone. We have our occupation taxes in our 211 fund, we have the Aquino and the 220, and we just, we just kind of have them broken out, and there's some specific rules that surround those, and we're just required by law to handle them that way. So, the food and beverage tax, what does that pay for? And the, so these are the voter-approved measures that got approved in 2016 when it got renewed by voters. To Jamie's point, the quarterly payments that were required to make for the state fair, this is, the pot of money can be used for that. We're also allowed to promote entertainment, ag, livestock shows, trade shows, things of that nature. Ongoing enhancement, development of recreation athletic facilities like hike bike trails, and we're able to invest in community development projects. So, what do we do, like literally do, to accomplish those four things? So, to the point, Jamie, we contribute 10% towards a lottery match. That's quarterly, comes from the state treasurer department. On any given year, we usually pay about $5,000 to $550,000 a year into that pot of money that comes directly out of the food tax money to help pay for that. We have a partnership with Girl Grand Island. I believe we are in year nine now of that, in our current fiscal year. We have allocated $500,000 a year for them through three different agreements, and their current agreement expires at the end of this fiscal year for us. And then our Husker Harvest Days agreement, we currently pay $200,000 a year specifically to them, and that was originally when they were doing all that drainage improvement project, when they were doing that out there, we gave them $2 million over a 10-year period, so that's why we have $200,000. So, those are our three big external ones that we take care of. And then our fourth one- And then our fourth one is our internal, the Grand Island Parks and Recreation Department. So one of the big things that we decided to do with that pot of money early on was the Vets Ball Field Complex update up there. We took a $5 million debt note at that particular point in time so that we could do the project in one fell swoop. We continue to make those debt service payments. At this point in time, we have just a little over $1.6 million left on that original debt note. It will be fully paid off in October of 2027, so it's coming soon as well. So then that would free up that debt service payment for either a different debt service payment or a different project. So at that point in time, council will help make the decision on how we reallocate some of those funds as well. And then the difference, so those are our like big four commitments, things we have to pay. We've got agreements, debt service, we have the AM schedule that says what we're going to pay. The rest we use towards parks and rec projects currently. Like Keith said, they've got a long list of projects. Todd might have a longer list of projects, he's not here to give me a hard time, but you guys have seen a lot of Todd's projects over the years, he's got a lot of really big ones. We're doing some partnerships in the community between the Ryder Park Ball Field Project, the Stolly Train Project, things of that nature, where we're in the early phases of designing those with construction in the near future. The Ryder Bar Ball Field Project alone is over $5 million project, so there's some significant dollars on some of these projects that we're actively working on and we haven't even started talking about what Camp Augustine could potentially eventually have, that if we're going to help fund any of that, if the Good Life District projects take off, are we going to continue to pump more money of our own money up there? So things that we haven't even discussed yet, those monies will have to eventually come from somewhere and that's probably the most logical pot of money for us to use this for. So our internal needs, everybody's external needs, they're all growing at a similar pace, if not faster than what we can keep up. So there will come a point in time where we're going to have to discuss who gets what and for what reasons, so. Here's a current outlook of our, this is, this is our website report, out on the city's website, where Pat kind of navigated with the Transparency Center. We've got a, and I'll show you guys where it is, just in case you ever want to peruse yourself. Under Departments, under the Finance Department, we actually have this tax reports. So the, these are actually, and this is one, if you guys ever want to have a snapshot of what it is that we actually do, this is a State of Nebraska Required Report, I have it printed up here, because it's a nice little cheat sheet. We're required annually to, to put this out on our website and it's actually just a snapshot of what we collected over the last 12 months of the various occupation taxes, what their purpose is and when the termination ends, so. I'll get into the hotel one, but that's one of the bigger ones we're going to talk about in short order, but. Up here, this is where we've got all the different types of taxes, they're kind of a hodgepodge, but we try to have most of them out there, kind of like with Pat's transparency. We've got a little information about what all of them are with links to ordinances and this is also where we navigate people that are coming with their new business and they need to know how to pay the food tax. Here's the information, instructions, but we have this food tax analysis and so that's what we're actually looking at here, just in the PowerPoint specifically. We put this information out there for transparency to the community and it's also good for us to see the analytics of where we were and where we are now. Sometimes there's reasons for that. As you can see in the bottom left corner, we have a tick note. Somebody didn't pay their taxes, we copped them. It was a lot of taxes all at once. It warranted a tick note so that if we ever went back and looked, why does this look weird? So we can see why it looks weird, so. We did have a little bit of variability. We went over this report last week with the Tax Oversight Committee. You may notice here, we had a couple of big, where big negatives, big positives, and then they sort of do the same thing the next year. The post office, for some reason, last December, not this past December, a ton of mail got delayed and we did not get it till January, so a lot of the taxes that people owed us in December where we would have normally received it, I don't remember if it was bad weather or what the deal was, but we did not get that money. Our analytics looked a little wonky, but you can see across the board, we are trending kind of where we were, a little bit above where we were last year and, you know, this is through February, so we're kind of right where we were anticipating being budgetary, so. It's still a very strong tax for us, I believe that, but we are seeing it turn down just a little bit lower. And I think as Pat's memo kind of showed, that things are slowing down a little bit. We sort of peaked here, what I feel like a few months ago, and things, things are starting to slow down a little bit and we're going to see that across any that are driven by purchases that people have to make. So that being said, kind of mentioned that we've got our needs that we have today. We've got good historical use of those funds, but there is a strong need for the future that we need to be thinking about, what are we actually going to use all these funds for? Our current agreements do expire in the relatively near future, in the next couple of years, between Grow Grand Island, our debt service, our Husker Harvest Days, those dollars are going to free up. So I think there needs to be some discussion in this upcoming budget cycle of what are we going to do with those monies? Do we plan on keeping those? Do we plan on anticipating getting a bigger debt note or things of that nature? I would anticipate that we continue to fund the state fair out of this. It's a voter-approved use of it, it makes sense. I mean, if we, we're going to have to pay it one way or the other, so we may as well continue to use this pot to pay for those funds, but it's something that you guys don't necessarily need to say out loud tonight, but if there are thoughts that people have, we do need to kind of have those hard discussions in the near future. I feel like everybody's made good use of those funds, but do we want to continue to use those funds the way we have? Or do we need to use them in a different manner? Yeah, Mitch?
First of all, those of you that don't know, Brian was double booked tonight. He was supposed to be at a BID meeting and this meeting, and guess which one he chose to be at? Thank you, Brian, for choosing to be at this one.
Amy.
Yes. So to help me with this question that you're posing and the colleagues would be to, again, let us know what those dollar amounts would be and maybe in each of the buckets that we're currently paying them out in. Once we know that, then we're, we have an idea of just how much money do we have to look at other potential uses. And we know parks is always going to be at least a million of this, always, more than likely, because it's the logical choice. We know the state fair is, so we know where two of the, the four pockets are, are going to be receiving. And so I don't think it's going to be tough as far as knowing where to go with it. It's just a matter of knowing what are those dollar amounts that will be loosened up and to actually see them on paper will help us understand.
We'll, we'll put that information together when the time comes. Right now, we've got, the last Husker Harvest Days payment will be made in November of 2027. The last debt service will be October of 2027. As I mentioned, the Grow Grand Island agreement ends at the end of this September. Those commitments that we currently have on the books are just south of $3 million that we, we will owe people one way or the other. So if you think about those $3 million being freed up, you know, today, it'll, it'll be paid out in the next two and a half years. What would we use that money for? Would we use it for something now? Would we use it for a more long-term vision project? I believe a lot of this will probably come to head as you guys have your further strategic planning meetings, because there's going to be a lot of things that come out of that about what do we actually want to be doing? I think the things that you decide you want to do, we're going to have to figure out how to pay for them and so I think this will be a stream of money that will help offset a lot of that, in my opinion, so.
But the other guiding part of that will be it needs to be in one of the four designated areas. So as long as it fits in that criteria, that's, that's what we want to be specific to.
And as, and as Jack was talking about, the 2018 sales tax, I, I kept thinking to myself, while we maybe didn't use them for all the things that we did, those street projects, those monies would have had to come from somewhere. So the monies that would have been used for those types of things, we just kind of shifted them elsewhere. So while we maybe didn't use the funds exactly for those, we kind of did de facto. And so I think the same logic will be applicable here. If we have a heavy amount of parks projects potentially, with all the development on the west side, especially with Keith's road projects, that's where a lot of housing developments are going. Our parks are lacking west of 281 pretty heavily, if you look at the divide on the east and west. There'll probably be some serious parks projects that need to come in the next decade on the west side of 281. So do we use some sort of debt service to help fund a parks project like that and use these funds to help offset that? Maybe, maybe not, you know, there's a lot of decisions and a lot of different ways we can do it. But you're right, we have to stay within the parameters of how these funds are allowed to be used, so, unless the rules change, so.
Hey, Brian, can you go to the Transparency Portal, go to Food and Beverage? You'll have to expand that, but there's the breakdown right there. So the, it looks like the second line from the bottom is parks projects and that's what we've been spending on, on parks. And this year for actual, well, for budget, we're actually spending down some of the cash balance. Those, those will be projects that Todd didn't do prior years. And so, you know, if we budget for them, you don't do them, it just builds your cash fund, right? So we budgeted for more projects for Todd this year. And just something to think about in the future is, like Brian had said, Grow Grand Island and his contracts up at the end of the year, which is $500,000. Also keep in mind, the general fund pays for LB840, which is $950,000 a year. So in all, we're putting tax 1.4 or 5 million into economic development. You know, do we, back to the strategy, a strategic vision that Brian's talking about, do we talk about that at those sessions? Are we spending the money most effectively? You know, do some of the projects out of Grow Grand Island, can they be paid LB840? Don't, you know, some yes, some no, but again, I think it's, council needs to look at that and make sure that, you know, we're getting the best bang out of our buck.
All right, moving on, hotel tax. So we do have a 2% lodging slash hotel tax, as we commonly refer to it. I think Jay kind of mentioned earlier when he was speaking that you guys just recently updated Section City Code 2361 back in January about how we can plan on continuing to fund the maintenance and operation of the Harlan Event Center. End of statement, very, you know, that, that covers a big area, so. Again, here's kind of a little snapshot, so you guys can see historically, so when I'm talking about money, you know what I'm talking about. You will notice in FY '21, very low COVID, this is still some COVID aftermath. The hotel industry did get hit pretty hard as far as their revenue stream. Food and beverage, not nearly as much as the hotel. It went down a little, but the hotels did get certainly hit a lot harder in that industry. Kind of that same trend, you could see weird numbers, same issue with this one as the mail service, as we did on the food. So in any given year, we're looking anywhere from about $5,000 to $500,000, $500,000 to $550,000 of revenue. Historically, right up until we took ownership of the Harlan Event Center, we had usually just, whatever we received, we turned around and we gave right back to the Foner Exposition Center as they were managing that facility. The Finance Department does not even take an admin fee. We do it free of charge because we care, but that money today, yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I just have a quick one here.
The, the numbers only go back to 2020 on there, but I'm just assuming the numbers have exceeded the pre-COVID rates for that, or?
Yeah, I think I had a little note, 2022, that was the highest since 2019. So 2022, we kind of bounced back to where we had been pre-COVID, so.
Yeah, just trying to see if we're making ground historically or not, but.
Yeah, so this, this 508 is kind of where we were pre-COVID, so. So it dipped and then it kind of came back up, but it's really, it's been pretty static. I wouldn't say we've seen a big increase in the years I've been here on that revenue stream. It, it's stayed more or less the same, where the food tax has sort of taken off over the last few years, so.
Yeah, I just want to stand some history prior to that, so, thank you.
And if you guys ever want older historical reports, I've got these back to, over the last decade, if you guys ever want to see any other analytical data, so. We just keep the most current, five years sort of look back up on the website at any given point, so, yeah, Doug?
Yeah, just a form of restaurant owner, but it would work a lot better for restaurants.
Hotels, if we could just pay it online. I noticed a lot of times that when I get the ta- occupation tax on my charge account or my bank, it's like 45 days later, so, you know, I could pay it online, I can.
Here, here's the little plug for the Building Department, went live last Monday with a online permitting software. Citizenserve is our new permitting software. Public Works is planning to be the phase two. They currently utilize OpenGov for their permitting platform. They're going to be the next one to migrate. The Finance Department is looking at phase three and I think we're going to find a way to need, needle in a way to be able to do that, yeah. Yep, we're working on it. We didn't, we've added more occupation taxes over the years, I think, than anybody probably ever anticipated. And when it first started, it was just sort of, write me a check with your piece of paper and we'll, we'll take care of that. It, it's been ballooned and it's become a lot more than I think it was a decade ago. And so we just haven't been able to keep up with the times as far as a digital platform, but we do have that on our radar for the near future. And if that doesn't work out, I got a Plan B I haven't told Pat about, so. Working on a way to make that viable, because I, I have heard that.
Every, every month, it's like 30 days later comes in, but.
And again, to our point about the postal service, sorry if anybody works there. It, it's gotten slower over time and it makes it difficult. We lose mail, you know, people try to make payments, they just never show up, so, it sort of eliminates that issue. Yeah, Mitch?
I think it will be interesting, based on information from Mr. Eunice, that if I remember right, he said there was 130-some days a year that our hotels were booked and now we have three going up, plus I think the resort. It will be quite interesting to see what happens with the available rooms here in our county as we see this. I think we're going to see a very good spike here.
So Laura and Pat and I have talked about that over the, you know, last three to six months, probably. Because we've said in the CRA meetings, there's new hotels coming, things of that, you know, with the TIF applications when they come there. There's a lot more lodging units that are coming to the community. We're also hoping that one of those growth spurts is from the Good Life District project, you know, obviously it's supposed to be a regional attraction. They need beds and heads to make that viable. The hotels will help make that viable. I think that will probably be the biggest spur in this one specifically. The other one could be the casino. Once it's fully operational, I would anticipate people will make trips to the, this community and stay in the hotel and make a weekend out of it. So does that mean they're stealing sales from a different place? I don't know, but I am anticipating this one to hopefully grow with those two projects on the horizon.
Think it should definitely make an impact and I still find it hard to believe, and I'm going by memory, but I'm pretty sure he said there was 133 days that we were sold out. That's a heck of a lot of days. That's a third of a year that you're, you're sold out and you can't find a hotel room. Well, that should change here in the next few months.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So in that vein, for this one specifically, if we do not do anything at all, this tax will expire December 31st, 2025. If we do not take action, if we just never brought anything forward to you guys, January 1, this tax does not exist anymore. So again, this is another near future discussion, which is why we've got a slide for it. This is something that we're going to have to actively think about, what it is that we anticipate doing with it. Do we continue to use it for the Harlan Event Center? We have our new partnership. There's a lot of improvements that need to be made to that facility. Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Ben, how much money are you talking about?
We're going to be losing.
$540,000 a year last year if we don't do anything about it, so. Really, at the end of the day, if we don't do this, there's no money going to Harlan Event Center from the city of Grand Island unless we're going to eat it in the general fund, realistically. Those are our two pots of money.
Could I, could I ask a question of Laura and the mayor on what are, what is the administration plans for continuing this or replacing it or letting it go away?
I'd like to see it continue. I think it's been.
Very useful and helpful tax and I think.
And I think it will help us operate the Heartland Events Center. Now, I know Mayor Vaverecek is making the case that perhaps the money can be used for other things. That's for the council to decide. But just historically, it's been a great benefit for us as far as the Heartland Events Center is concerned.
I agree with you. I think it's a good source of revenue and we've used it wisely.
Before I call on Jack, the only other point I want to make specifically in that vein, most of us don't go to a hotel in this town to spend the night. These are mostly outsiders. So if we don't have it here, that means locals are going to help foot the bill for those things, where right now, visitors are the ones paying for those. Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Thank you. I'm with you guys. I think we need to keep this. My question is, when do we have to make a decision on this? And when we make the decision, do we write it in stone what that money is for? Or can it be broad and say, it's going to be, kind of like the others are, where we say, there's a set amount of this dollars that's going to this fund, to say the events center. But anything over that, we can use it for X, Y, and Z. Is that something that we can stipulate? Or do we have to be more fine-tuned?
We can be more broad than the prior city ordinance was. So it was very specific when it was previously limited. It was very specific to the support of payments to the Foner Park Expo and Event Center for the support and operation, construction and operation of the Heartland Events Center. So when we made the revision, when we brought the revision to you in January to change city code, to take out the part that limited it to payments to Foner Park Expo and Events, we just left it as it was, which was to support the operations of the Heartland Events Center. There are, you all know, there are a significant amount of capital improvements that need to happen to that building, deferred maintenance that needs to happen. We actually have Honeywell. You'll be seeing them, I believe, on the, on the 22nd, April 22nd, to make a presentation to you about energy conservation contracting, where they would present a proposal to you to pay for capital improvements that involve energy efficiency improvements, repairing boilers, improving insulation, changing out lighting, the LED, but all things that need to be done. And you can pay for those improvements, the cost of those improvements, with the savings on the utility bills. So it's a great opportunity for the city. We're not just looking at it for Heartland Events Center, but for a number of our buildings. There are six prioritized buildings that have pretty high utility bills, where they are doing what they call an audit to evaluate how we can do that. So obviously, Heartland Events Center is part of that. So as we learn about what opportunities are available to pay for those capital improvements, that'll give us an idea about what type of funding is needed for operations because a lot of the operational expenses, near as we can tell, that Foner Park incurred was fixes, short-term fixes to things breaking down. So if we can improve those capital facilities, that should improve the operating cost. Plus, it's a different operations model now with VenueWorks. They showed in their projections for their pro forma that they would be able to turn a profit after a period of time. So Heartland Events Center may not need 100% of the funding. That's a long way of saying that. They may not need 100% of the funding that was used in the past to operate it. It's just a different model.
Does none of this money go towards tourism?
This money can go towards tourism, and that's a number of cities simply say that the lodging tax or hotel tax is used to support tourism promotion.
But we don't do that currently?
We don't do that. We can make it that broad. And it is something that is a council manic tax, that the city council decides to impose it. The rate that we have, the 2%, is the local maximum that you can charge, though. So you couldn't increase the rate, you could reduce it, or you can keep it the same. But it's really deciding how should it be spent.
And you said Honeywell, Honeywell?
Honeywell.
Honeywell is coming to talk to us in April.
They will give a presentation to you, not just on the Heartland Events Center, but on other city facilities.
So we could make a decision on this, this summer theoretically?
Really, what we have talked about as staff is that we need to bring a recommendation to you as you're heading into the budget season because obviously you need to know whether to budget for that. And we need to know whether we should budget for that revenue stream in fiscal year 26.
I'm excited to hear about that Honeywell. Is that something that will go towards residents as well?
It only is something that we can use as a governmental agency, so for government buildings. It's a program that is set out in state law, it's used nationally, but it can really help cities save money on energy efficiencies and making sure that capital improvements, you have a good revenue stream to pay for that. It's a pretty slick program.
So that's, yeah, so to your point, Mark, that's kind of what we'd be looking at, potentially losing, so. And yeah, I was thinking the same thing as Laura of, I think in the coming months, we will be having more budget study sessions, and I'm guessing there will be some direct dialogue and discussion surrounding this with shortly in the fall, more likely than not, official action so that we can solidify it. And that way, when we go into October with our new fiscal year, we're done talking about it and it's a done deal, hopefully, so. And the last one I kind of want to talk about a little bit is at the Keno proceeds, so. This is straight out of state statute, community betterment purposes. There's a couple of different things that you're allowed to use it for. But basically, we use the bottom two bullet points of this particular item by contributing the physical well-being of individuals such as donations, foster athletic activities at county, city, or village, may use the proceeds from the conduct of a lottery to build, improve, or maintain parks and recreation facilities. And then the other one would be fostering where the public works or enabling further erection or maintenance of public structures, such as contributing to a county, city, village building fund or donations to fund parks or recreation areas. That's the long-winded way of saying we use this for parks and rec. So again, this is sort of a, what do we use it for, parks and rec, generally speaking? So the amount of money, it really varies a lot year over year, but we usually see somewhere between 350 to 400,000 dollars a year out of the casino, or, excuse me, the Keno, different kind of gambling. So this is a different pot of money that we actively use. There's different ways it can be used, but we have historically used it specifically for that. See if my thing will cooperate. These are the other things that we could potentially use it for. We could provide for individuals opportunities to contribute to the betterment of the community, such as initiating cleanup or beautification projects. So the way that we've historically used parks and rec, they're sort of our catch-all when it comes to like donated art, things like that sometimes. If we wanted to directly contribute to like a cleanup or beautification project, which again, it's very broad, but this pot of money could be utilized for that. And this bottom one is basically, it could be used for tax relief. And so kind of to Pat's point, we always look at the casino taxes. It gets just dumped in the general fund, sure. But without that revenue in there, property taxes would have to go up for us to have a balanced budget. This is sort of that same logic in my mind. It's maybe not used directly for property tax relief, but if we were going to fund additional parks projects that the food tax can cover, let's say, that means the general fund's going to pay for them. Thus, we, this is also acting kind of as property tax relief. It's in a different pot, it's in the 220 fund, so you just don't see it directly. So again, parks has a lot of needs, but is there better use for these funds directly that we need to be discussing? Anyway, Mitch.
For clarification, 100% of Keno funds right now goes to parks and it's just thrown in specific projects? Or it's just tossed in there saying we know we're going to use these funds for park projects?
99.9%. I'm just making up a number. There's a small amount that gets used for utility bills. So if you see all the signage when you come into town, it says, welcome to Grand Island. If there's lights pointing at them, we use this to pay the light bill. So we got three different spots around town on the main corridors where you see those signs. There are utilities to maintain those. We foot the bill out of here because nobody really owns them. No department wants to maintain them or own, they don't want to pay for it out of their operating budget. So we use this to kind of foot the bill.
Okay, very good.
Have any other questions on any of that?
Thank you, Brian. So just to wrap up, so this is just the beginning of our budget process, okay? And in April, either April 15th or 22nd, I'll be back, probably with Brian as well. And we're going to talk about expenditures and expenses. And also at that time, deliver a budget message to you folks for direction. We're going to give you a suggestion of what we think our direction should be in developing the budget. And so we want your input before the process. Usually, it's kind of during and after, so it doesn't really make sense for us to do that. So a little bit different, we're going to ask for, give us some, some advice of what you would like to see in the budget. I also just wanted to update you on, this is large, reset. And so at the end of February, this is what Good Life District has pulled in, 2.4 million. I believe right now it's at 2.5 in the middle of the month. But I just want to tell you that our finance department is doing all they can to get that money collected, doing the education piece, especially on that. And, you know, we have people actually walk the district and stuff like that, and that's what we need to do. Doug, to your point, we definitely need that electronic submission of, and not only tax, everything. Yeah, yep, absolutely. And it would be easier for us, because right now it's on spreadsheets. And so it's, it's, yeah. So that is, you know, kind of the direction that we're going. If you have any follow-up questions, I would entertain those, so, but thank you. Five months, October through February.
What is the, what is your opinion of the financial health of the city as of today?
Just want to clarify, that's, it's only three months of collections, though. It's been in effect for five months.
This is actually three months?
Yes, yeah, it's got October, November, December's sales specifically, so.
Yes, yeah, because it's 30 days, right? So it's the lag. So for sales tax, we have a 60-day lag, for this, we have 30-day lag. So, Mayor, to ask your question, we are sitting very healthy for our city. And just to show you, this is our general fund. And so the first column is the 25 budget, and this is our budget numbers. And so the important part here is, whoops, is ending cash. So we anticipate ending cash at 45 million. Cash reserves are 25%. We, the policy is anywhere between 20 and 30, so I just picked 25. And so excess reserves of 32 million. And so with this projection, 2% revenue growth, 3%, and basically a 5% in expenses. You know, eventually you run out of money, but we look pretty solid. Our intention is for this year to be very, it's, the world's not on fire, but we just want to be very conservative. We just want to, we don't know what we don't know right now. And so we're just taking that day-by-day, day-by-day approach, and that's all we can do right now, so. Mark?
Have you projected how much revenue the Target store is going to bring to Grand Island when they open, probably in October, November?
The studies have shown 1.8 million annual revenue, tax revenue. But what we don't know is what it's going to cannibalize to Walmart or Sam's or somewhere else in that district. So conservatively, we're looking at maybe probably 1.4, 1.5 million. So yes, that'll be a huge boost.
That will be.
Looking forward to that.
Need to watch your graphs during that period.
Yeah, and then I understand, I think the chamber advertised, I think it was April 26th, that the B&amp;B Theaters are having an open house there at Conestoga Marketplace. And so excited about that as well, so.
Good news.
Yes, it's great. Mitch?
Well, first of all, thank you for sharing this information with us tonight. It's good to take it incrementally like we are. This is a nice way to do that.
I, this is my favorite worksheet right here. So this is my favorite. But I'm confused, I'm confused by it right now because the numbers don't seem to be making sense to me at the bottom. So where am I, where am I off here? Because I'm not seeing a major reduction in balances as we move forward. And that's what's.
So 32 million at the end of this year, projecting if we spend everything and, if we get everything and spend everything that our budget says, that's what we're saying. It's 32 million. At the end of '31, it's 23 million.
That's not going down that rapidly, which means our revenues have to be holding very high and our expenses not as much. So I'm not, I'm not tracking with that. It just doesn't seem to be logical compared to past worksheets that we've looked at.
So the revenue growth, we have at 2%. Just to make sure all my formulas are right.
Typically, at the end of about five to seven years, your cash reserve is going to be pretty low normally, based on the worksheets that I remember. Because that's, that's kind of what happens.
Those were the old doom and gloom worksheets. These are the glass half-full. We're not doing doom and gloom.
I kind of like the conservative approach. But anyway, those numbers don't really, they're not tracking in my brain because I would think in five to seven years, we should see those numbers shrinking much more rapidly. And I'll let you sort through that. I'm glad Mark asked the question about Target. I didn't know what that Target effect is. I would agree that there's going to be some cannibalization there for a while till Target's going to be the latest new shiny thing, and we're going to run to it, and we're going to spend our money. And then people like me that are price-conscious go back to the stores where we're going to save a little money, even though we may have to substitute quality. So it'll all, it's going to be big for a little bit, big buzz, and then in maybe six months to a year, it's all going to kind of go that way. I do want to say that I didn't know until probably in the last year, is how stupid I am, how the lottery 10% match comes about. And I think you explained it to me. It's based on total lottery ticket sales drives the 10% number that we're going to pay. And that number's been going up and up and up, it seems like. And the state fair can thank me because I've been buying more lottery tickets. So I'm a contributing factor to that and didn't even know it. I always wonder, why are those numbers going up? Well, if I didn't buy as many lottery tickets, it wouldn't be up as high, so.
I find it fascinating, not throwing my own opinion in here, but find it fascinating that Nebraska votes in gambling and our lottery's still going up. Just fascinating.
I'm going to buy another lottery ticket because I think it's pushing 400 million now, so here we go.
Brian?
Thanks. I just want to expand off of what Doug was saying a little bit too, of ease of collecting some of the sales tax revenue. And I can just tell you, just working in finance myself, you know, when people are trying to pay us, the easier we make it for them, the better for all of us. And I would just support doing what we can to find other efficiencies with that. But are there other disconnected departments here collecting tax revenue might have similar issues with different platforms we might need to look at as well?
We're trying to get it all under one platform.
Under one pane of glass.
Because right now, we have like 10.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it's crazy.
Like I go to pay utilities online, it works great. But yeah, I'd really be supportive of doing that, and just finding extra efficiencies there, just to save your time and the time for other people as well.
Absolutely.
And maybe have reliability. But yeah, just wanted to touch on that, so.
And what Mitch was talking about in terms of you're not seeing the excess reserves number go down. But if you look at column B, that just shows one year of spending that excess reserves for specified capital projects. And that is, when we bring, when we've brought you the budget last year and in the year before, that was where we said, here are the funds available to spend on these capital projects that your department heads told you they needed. You have a policy, a fiscal policy that sets your 15% reserve, and it just generally says, you should use, you shouldn't have more than that amount in your reserves. You should, should use it. But we don't have an express policy that says, when we have excess reserves, we're going to put them in, say, a capital improvement fund, or a portion of those in a capital improvement fund. So that's, that's part of the reason why you see that number staying essentially flat, because you're projecting that 2% revenue growth, which is conservative. And we're conservative in projecting our expenditures. But we don't really have a plan for spending down an existing excess reserve amount over a period of time. And so you'll see it continue to stay essentially flat or going down slightly.
Question would be to me, what's holding our reserves that high for that many consecutive years? Because we just haven't spent them yet.
You're not spending it. You're not spending it.
Okay.
Right? You're projecting that 2% growth, you're projecting very conservative, low increases in your operating and your standard expenses, but you're not, you don't have a policy that says, we're going to use these excess reserves to take care of some longstanding, outstanding capital needs.
So as we decide to spend those...
This one-time money.
Yes. So as we spend those, those, that cash reserve number will go down using this sheet. But then again, my next question then would be, what's driven them this high? I don't remember them being this high, 32 million.
Well, so during COVID, we budgeted like the world was coming to an end, and we cut everything back immensely. Probably one of our better sales tax years that year. And so we built there. Secondly, I might add, is the revenues that we forecast were pretty close, but usually we're a little under what comes in. And then add to that vacancy savings. Police, we were down 10, 15 a year for how many years? We budgeted for those, but, so it just goes to the bottom, right? You budgeted, we didn't spend it, so it's going to go into, you know, cash reserves. So it's a combination.
Theoretically, again, I'm looking at, I'm going by memory of a worksheet that showed nice stair steps down in cash as it went out five to seven years. In 10 years, it could almost be flat. And of course, this isn't showing that, and we didn't have those kind of cash reserves. The question's going to be, what, do we really need to maintain our property tax asking as it is now? And I mean, these are the questions we have to ask if we have these kind of reserves. And if we don't, what's that impact? So I think we have to ask ourselves, do we continue to ask for the same level of property tax when we have $32 million in cash reserves? So you just can't keep the pot full up here forever, knowing also that there's a major unknown with all the chaos in Washington right now, and tariffs today and no tariffs tomorrow. We don't know what that's going to do for us on our sales tax, which is what, around that 29 million, I think that Chad projected. So I think we've got, we've got to ask ourselves some tough questions, and we're very lucky if these numbers are true, and I have no reason, I guess, to believe they're not, although they're a surprise to me.
So this is the 2022 spreadsheet, the Mitch spreadsheet. And you could see in '27, we were predicting cash at 19 million. So that was in '22, with the, that was the glass was, was half-full, or half-empty, actually.
Well, just surprising. This is a pleasant surprise, but it's a huge surprise to me, because it just boggles my mind. I don't remember the cash reserves being that high. I thought they were like 16 to 20 million. I don't remember the 30 million.
Used to be, yeah.
Even though you said we have good financial health as of today, with the issues such as tariffs or other things on the horizon, we're going to proceed with a conservative approach this year?
Agreed. I would recommend a very cautious approach. You know, it's, personnel's our biggest expense. Do we want to add FTs? I don't think so. We could wait a year. I think operations have been really good at the city. I think we're very efficient for what we have. So that's a question for council.
So, looking at this Mitch chart, is that what we call it?
Yep.
When we looked at this last year, I remember Fire Station 3 being in there, and I think our original proposal on that, or our original estimate was 3, 3.5 million. Did that sound accurate?
Was.
Uh-huh. And this is 5.4 million. When you start looking at being glass half-full, glass half-empty, we got to be glass 100% like realistic. And I like the conservative approach, because right there is $2 million that we didn't think we're going to have to come out of this. And if we had $10 million every year, we would be down to negative something. So as much as I would love to have the conversation, can we lower property taxes, we still have more projects to do. And I'm hoping when we do the strategic planning process, that will hopefully dictate how we look at what's important to us and where those big projects come from. But just understanding that even if you budgeted 10 million, it might be 12 if you spend it. And that's, I don't see this as being a lot of money left over if it was 10 million this year coming down. And does that all come out of this this year? Did we do all of the fire stations?
To your, to your point, the police vehicle storage and training facility at 1.9 million, it's coming in at 3.2.
Well, there you go.
So that's next year's problem, so.
So, when you talk about the software, if that is for helping us collect more money, and it is for collecting money for the Good Life District, can that be an expense out of the Good Life District to pay for that new software?
A portion of it, because it would collect many more taxes besides the Good Life District tax.
Okay.
Well, it's already paid for.
Oh, well, there you go. Did it come in 1.9 billion?
No, it was 300,000, I believe.
Okay. I appreciate the conservative approach.
Mike?
I want to thank the finance people for all the good work they've done for us, because there's three of us sitting up here that remember in 2017 when we had no excess left. And Mitch is one of them. I know what he's talking about. I think if we're prudent and cautious with our money the next couple of years, we're going to look just as well as we do now. And it's only because we've had good guidance through it. That's the only thing I can see, because we have spent down before in the past, and it's, it's come back and bit us. So right now, with the way our economic plan is for this country, I think I would sit back and just take it easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your excellent presentations. This has been very enlightening. You put a lot of work into this, and it shows. Thanks to both of you.